Meeting for May 5th, 2020 to order. And I'll call the roll, and if you would respond. Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon. It was a little late coming through, but I see you. Commissioner Beasley Brown?
Here.
And Mayor Wilkerson, I'm here. First item is approval of the minutes for the special call meeting on April 21st, 2020. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Okay. Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Motion carries unanimously. First item is municipal order 2020, number 59. A municipal order approving the promotion of Josh Minton to the position of senior parks facility maintainer in the Parks and Recreation Department. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel will turn it over to you.
We have a opening for Parks Facility Maintainer Senior. We had a retirement back in, at the end of January. Mr. Jimmy Hilliard served us well for 13 years. We are looking, we looked for a replacement. We went out and searched and found a Mr. Josh Minton. It's actually kind of a promotion for Josh. He was hired in at, in 2016 as a seasonal labor in the operations of Public Works. And actually went to, in 2018, he became a Labor Two, and then was promoted to OMT One in 2019. So he's also worked for Parks and Rec at the, for Warren County as a park supervisor. This position is in charge of Lampkin Park and oversees some seasonal workers to maintain that park all summer and throughout the year. And we felt Josh was a good, good pick. We had four applications. Three were interviewed by Mike Mitchum, Dwayne Ozbrooks, Brent Belcher, and Tiger Thule, and recommending Josh Minton for this position.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Thing done, I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon? Tried again, didn't come across.
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Person, yes. Motion carries unanimously. Municipal order 2020, number 60. Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Sabrina Durbin to the position of office associate in the fire department. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel.
This position is also a result of retirement by Teresa Kendall back at the end of January. Teresa served us well for, I think, 25 years or 27 years, or 25, sorry. Got it wrong. But she serviced well in the fire department office. And we went out for a search, and there were 159 applications for this job, both internally and externally. Forty-three applicants were invited to take an assessment. Thirty-nine completed it. We selected seven applicants for interview. Those interviews were completed by Chief Coulson, Deputy Chiefs Morrow and Gillum, along with Elise Yonker and Tiger Thule. We are recommending Sabrina Durbin for this position. Sabrina comes to us from Core in Scottsville. It's a community center with fitness programs, camps, family activities. It serves 3,500 members. Before that, she worked for Parks and Rec in Glasgow. And we feel like with her experience and her skills with the assessment that she took, she is the best candidate for the position. She graduated from Edmonton County High School and attended WKU. So we're recommending Sabrina Durbin for the Office Associate for Fire Department.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes. Yes.
Paragon? I got you. Thanks. Paragon? I'm sorry, I walked on you, Sue.
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Motion carries unanimously. Municipal order 2020, 61. Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Chris Kendall to the position of golf professional in the Parks and Recreation Department. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel.
Like Jimmy Hillard and Teresa Kendall, we had Angie Taylor retire back in, at the end of February. Angie served us for 26 good years, and her last day was February 28th. So we've had this opening that manages Hobson Grove and Paul Walker Golf Courses open that we need to fill. We went out and searched, did an internal and external search. We received 10 applications. Six individuals were selected for interview by Brent Belcher, Phil Jones, Gabe Neillan, Alan Maroney, Jeremy Pericchia, and Tiger Thule. This person will be responsible for supervising and running both of those golf courses, the pro shops, overseeing events, running programs, the driving range, golf instruction. We've shifted some, some tasks and duties that were formerly under this position to the Parks Administration Office, such as HR and payroll type duties. And so this person will be free to run these two operations as, as like a business, try to market and bring in business and make it, make it thrive. So we went out and found Mr. Chris Kendall. Chris actually worked for us years ago during college at Crosswind's Golf Course. Did some great work with us under Phil Jones, managed inventory, assisted with tournaments, took care of the facility and assisted customers. And so Chris has, he graduated from Greenwood High School, has a marketing degree from WKU, and we are recommending Chris Kendall to be the golf professional for, for Paul Walker and Hobson Grove Golf Courses. Be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020, number 62. Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Hillary Hightower to the position of City Attorney in the Law Department. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, Mr. Harmon is going to be leaving us in September. And so we have been on a search for his replacement. It's going to be big shoes to fill. This one has taken us a little while. We started out, months ago, we had, we had 14 applications to come in. We selected about a third or more of those to interview, five. We had applications from all over the country. We had one from Las Vegas, Virginia. They were from all over the place. So we, we selected five candidates that had practiced law in Kentucky. My committee that I put together for the interviews was Katie, Jean, and, and Aaron Holsey, and myself. We interviewed the five applicants, got it narrowed down to two. We took those two to another group of senior managers with Jason Coulson, Greg Meredith, Brent Belcher, and Brent Childers to give a second interview. And so from that process, we have selected Hillary Hightower to be our next city attorney. Hillary comes to us with 25 years of law practice. This, she's in her 25th year this year. Ironically, she actually practiced law with Jean years ago with Satterfield and Harmon when they were doing the city attorney duties from out of house. So Hillary got some experience at that point. She is a Bowling Green High graduate, went on to WK, to the University of Kentucky for her undergraduate degree in political science and economics. Then she went to the University of Louisville to get her law degree. And so she worked, she's worked for various firms, but her most recent experience, after she left Jean and Dixie Satterfield, she went to work for Kaufman and Kerwin for a while for defense, criminal defense work. There's the train. And she also did some work for Lexis, LexisNexis, where she wrote and edited case law summaries. And then from there, she went to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office with Chris Coron, has been there since 2004. We feel like Hillary was, will be a great fit for, for this position and for the Board of Commissioners, as well as our senior management team. Brings an abundance of experience from many, many, many different areas of, of law, and feel she'll be a valuable asset to, to our team. So her resume is included in your packet, and be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Motion patches, passes unanimously. Next item is municipal order 2020, number 64. Municipal order approving appointment of Joy Hunt to the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. This is a new appointment for the board. Patsy Sloan served for many years out there, indicated that she was ready to pass the torch to the next person. Joy Hunt comes to us from many, many years in the banking industry and management there, and I thought she would be a good fit for this board and recommending that appointment. Are there any comments or questions?
Hey Bruce, you, you missed item number five.
Ashley, what were you saying?
Mayor, you missed, you missed item number five.
I skipped number five, but I'm on, we already have item number six, which is number 64 on the floor. Did I read it wrong? Got to read it correctly, even though I skipped it. Okay. So we have on the floor the Bowling Green Regional Airport Board appointment. Messed up there. Are there any questions about that? Okay, I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. So that passes unanimously, and my fault skipping number five. So we'll go back and do municipal order 2020, number 63. Municipal order approving the reappointment of Mary Phoenix McCubbin to the University District Review Committee. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. Going back to Mary Phoenix, she served us for, just last year, I believe it was, filling an unexpired term previously, so this will give her a full term. She comes to the city from being involved in businesses for a long time and fulfills one of the designated positions for sorority housing member on the board. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Thank you for calling my attention that I skipped. Now we'll go down to item seven, which is municipal order 2020, number 655. Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid 2020, number 49, for PC desktop and workstation replacement from HPI International Brooklyn, New York, in the amount of $392,070 and 10 cents. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel.
This was a project we had planned to do in FY21, but we realized that our Windows 7 current operating system in use is becoming a security concern. We're losing support for that. So Lynn swapped out some things in the technology fund, and we have decided to do this in FY20. And we went out for bid, and we got 11 bids on this, ranging all over the board, from all over the country. And we are awarding, recommending award to HPI International out of Brooklyn, New York, in the amount of $392,000. I will note that $22,000 will be, roughly $22,000 will be reimbursed from planning and zoning through our contract for services with them, that we, we service their, their technology system and their computers. So that will be reimbursed, knocking this total price really down to 370-ish. So we went out for bid, went through all of the, the hoops, and found that HPI was the best price. And you have a summary in your packet. There are two different items. Item one pertains to 25 workstations that are a little bit higher level with public works engineers, GIS people, as well as our website manager. And the other item two involves roughly 380 desktops that are more standard. So we're, all in all, we're getting about 405 desktop workstations out of this, this price. So not too bad through HPI International. And I'll be glad to try to answer any of your questions you have.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next is municipal order 2020, number 66. Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number 2020-51 for fiscal year 2020 Convention Center interior improvements from Sunbelt Construction Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $841,000. Motion by Wilkinson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel.
This is a project that all of you all should be familiar with, at the Convention Center that's kind of been on the board. This is the, kind of the refurbishment or the interior improvements and the generator replacement at the Convention Center. Of this, this price, we, let me back up. We, we got six bidders on this project, ranging from 841,000 to a million to 20. Sunbelt Construction was the low bidder at 841. They will come in and do new carpet, wall coverings, acoustic wall coverings, ceiling tiles, lighting, and replacement of a generator. Of this price, about $100,000 of this is for the generator, which is going to give us more circuits and can handle more load. All of this was planned and spec'd out by Branstad or Carroll, and we're recommending Sunbelt Construction to do this job for $841,000. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
When do they anticipate starting?
Tomorrow. No, ASAP. Seriously. We've been waiting on this, and they're ready to go. And Dave Hayner's been talking to them, and they're, they're, they're ready to seriously go this week. And he's going to give them the green light once you all approve this today.
Hopefully, they can get in and get out before we, you know, start taking groups again.
Right.
Thank you, Sue. Dana?
Yes. Could you remind me what fund this capital improvement is coming from, please?
Yeah, this comes from the Convention Center Fund, which is mainly funded by your transit room tax. We, we have a capital, capital fund kind of built up over there at the Convention Center to, for maintenance and any renovations. That's what we've been using for all of the, the work that's been done over there. None of this is general fund money. Convention Center was, has always been kind of a separate entity. Well, we did recently pull it in under the city's umbrella, but it is all conventions that are money coming from their reserves.
Thank you. I think it's great that we're able to have this, you know, designated, designated stream to fund this project, especially because I think it's going to be really great in terms of being able to get people to work and also get it done while the Convention Center is empty. So thank we're able to get stuff.
I'd like to thank Mike Grubbs for his insight into putting this kind of capital funding together, setting it aside over all the many years, taking the room tax, investing it. We, we've had some good investments with Convention Center as well that have, that have helped that capital fund and been able to save money and run kind of a tight, tight ship on the operations side, too, to be able to put this money toward capital. So we fixed a roof, we've redone the lobby, we're putting in a generator now. I think we've done a few other things, and we're getting ready to do this, the interior work here now. So it should be in, in really good shape after this is done.
Anything else? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020, number 67. Municipal order approving the year 17 annual action plan of the Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG entitlement funding, and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Motion by Wilkinson and second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel.
So Brent Childers and Nick Cook had a public hearing on this back on April 16th to review the draft annual action plan for our CDBG allotment. We are anticipating 654,826 to come in for fiscal year, fiscal year 21 for CDBG. We have kind of socked away last year's money, I think was around 500 to 600,000 dollars for our neighborhood improvement plan in census blocks 103.3 and 103.4. So we're going to take most of this money, 654, put it with last year's money of the 507,000, and we're going to do the projects that are on your, in your plan, your packet there before you. Proposing $740,000 for new affordable housing opportunities. That would include seven affordable rental housing units, five affordable home ownership units, two transitional housing units. We're also planning to put roughly $283,000 into pedestrian improvements on Johnson Drive for sidewalks, 1700 square, 1700 linear feet, and Dennis Way about 700 feet. Along with that, we're also planning to use roughly 95,000 for, for some administrative costs, and then some local agency funding totaling $50,000 to the Bowling Green Human Rights Commission for their fair housing, education, outreach program, as well as their facility ADA improvements in the amount of 15,000. So again, we have kind of put away last year's money to put with this year's money so that we can get more accomplished in census tracts 103.3, 103.4. We put a, we put a map in your packet, outlined in the yellow showing those two census tracts. And we all, we've also got the sidewalks marked in red on that map for, for Johnson and Dennis Way. And I would be happy to try to answer any question, questions on this. And if I can, I might have to get back to you after I get with Brent or Nick, if I can't answer a question.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? I think we were all on the conference call. I think it was the largest, if I remember Brent saying it was the largest attended, commented on public hearing that he'd had on the CDG Community Development Block Grant Fund. So I'm glad he was able to do it that way. And thank you guys for participating as well. Any other comments? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Last item on the agenda is the second reading and final reading for ordinance BG 2020, number six. An ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 1.9174 acres from GB General Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at Zero Worthway, presented, presently owned by Baker &amp; Hilliard Incorporated and Russell &amp; Francis Heard with Hillview Place LLC is the applicant. Again, this is a second reading. Have a unanimous recommendation for planning and zoning for that reason. All right, I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkinson, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. That's the last item on our agenda. And our next scheduled meeting currently is May 19th, 2020. Thank you for tuning in.